All right, Gil. Okay, good.[55.28][55.28](laughing) Almost good afternoon. Gilberto, por favor. All right, we're gonna go ahead and start the special Southgate City Council meeting. Roll call, please.
Mayor Dávila.
Present.
Vice Mayor Barón.
Present.
Councilmember Avalos.
Present.
Councilmember Hurtado.
Present.
Councilmember Rios.
Present.
City Treasurer de la Paz.
Present.
City Attorney, I'm sorry, City Manager Houston.
Present.
And City Attorney Salinas.
Present.
Thank you. Okay, item number one.
Yes, thank you. We're going to pass the baton over to Steve Costley, who will introduce our exciting project here.
If I can read it for the record. The city council will issue a certificate of appreciation to Aleah Martinez for her Girl Scout Gold Award project at the Southgate Sports Center.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. Before you tonight, you have Ms. Aleah Martinez, who was here just a little while ago, asking for permission to complete her gold project for the Girl Scouts of America. She wants to leave, and I'll use this term because I've used it lately, her fingerprints on the city already. And she's done that through a bunch of different meetings and other processes of hiring an outside contractor and replacing the water fountain at the sports center with a bottle filling station. And as I left today, there were 4,288 water fills already on the bottle side. So it keeps track of it.
Oh.
And we can see what that has brought us as a city, which means most likely there's 4,288 less plastic bottles running around getting used. So I'd like to bring up Aleah. She has a few words to say and a video or a couple of slides to show. And if, wait a second for the city clerk to pull those up.
Good evening, council. Like Steve said, my name is Aleah Martinez, and I am a Girl Scout ambassador from 10-05. And yeah, a little while ago, over a year ago today, I presented my gold award project to you all in this very same position. As the highest award a Girl Scout can achieve, my project focused on addressing water insecurity in our community while also stumbling to support global sustainability goals. Through this effort, I was able to install Southgate Park's first indoor hydration station and establish a website to encourage others to do the same in their own communities. I am proud to share that officially, that have officially completed Project Drip Drip since this July. Since then, the refill station has saved over 4,000 water bottles, and that number continues to grow every day. It has been an honor to have had the city's support in reaching these milestones, both for our community and for our environment. This project has shown me the power of collaboration and community. None of this would have been possible without the support of the city from Steve, from James, and my Girl Scout family. So with that, I just wanted to share my appreciation and gratitude to you all. Thank you so much.[260.73][260.73](applause) I also wanted to share the official Project Drip Drip plaque that I made for the water station. So this will go on top of the water station, and it has the link to my, the QR code to my website so that others can be inspired to do the same and follow along in my Girl Scout journey. And then it also has the phrase "Drip by Drip, We Can All Make a Difference." Yeah, thank you so much. And then I don't know if the video can play, but that's just a video compilation from our second workshop, showing a lot of people that came out to support the installation of the new water station. Yeah, but that video was actually taken on July 10th, so a few months ago. That video makes me smile all the time because I feel like it's just an example of like how our community has really came together on behalf of the Project Drip Drip. And I'm really grateful for you all and your support.
Wonderful, thank you. Wow, congratulations. Congratulations on this project. It's just amazing, I mean, what you could do when you put your mind to do, you know, something for your community. So congratulations. We do have here a certificate for you. And I'm gonna go ahead and read the certificate. It's presented by the Southgate City Council on behalf of the citizens of Southgate to Aleah Martinez in recognition and commendation for your dedicated service to the Southgate community through your Girl Scouts Gold Award project at the Southgate Sports Center. Your initiative to replace a standard drinking fountain with a bottle filling station demonstrates a strong commitment to sustainability, public health, and community improvement. The city of Southgate extends its sincere appreciation for your leadership, hard work, and meaningful contribution. Congratulations to you, and I know that you're gonna go far away, especially what you already have started. And hopefully, at one time, you know, that's, I mean, if it keeps a record of the bottles that get refilled, it's gonna get to a million. I believe so.
This time next year.
We'll wait, we'll wait, we'll wait. We'll keep a track of that. So congratulations.
Thank you so much. I appreciate you all.
If we can get a picture? Thank you so much.
All right, thank you all so much for your time.
Thank you. Okay, so we'll go on to our next slide, and we'll just close session.
Item number one, conference with Leo Council pending litigation pursuant to government code section 54956.9A, 54954.9B, 3C, A Juana Bonilla versus City of Southgate et al. Item number two, conference with labor negotiator pursuant to government code section 54957.6, agency representation, their city manager, Rob Houston, unrepresented employees, top management department directors, hourly employees, employer organizations are Southgate MEA, Southgate PMMA, Southgate DMA, Southgate PMA, and Southgate POA. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
City Attorney, do we have any further?
Nothing at this time. Thank you very much, Madam Mayor.
I'll put it to the audience. We don't have anyone in the audience. Do we have any emails?
We have one email, Madam Mayor.
Go ahead.
This is from Mr. Mario Dominguez, who expressed frustration over the ongoing labor negotiations with the city hall union officials. He questioned why they have not been concluded after nine months and suggests that they need, the need for an outstanding arbitration. He criticizes the city manager's effectiveness and high salary, urging the city to resolve the matter promptly. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
All right, thank you. So with that, we'll go on to close session.
Exactly, right.
Evening, everyone. We're gonna go ahead and come back from closed session. She should be coming. City Attorney?
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor. In closed session, the City Council discussed one pending case of litigation, Juana Bonilla versus City of Southgate. City was served with the lawsuit involving an accident and a city vehicle, which also involved the car driven by Juana Bonilla, who's inside the car at the time. On a motion that was made by Mayor Dabila and was seconded by Councilmember Ortado, and on a vote of five to zero, the City Council authorized the City Attorney to defend that action. Item number two, conference with labor negotiator. The City Council received a report from the City Manager with respect to ongoing union-related discussions involving each of the employee organizations listed on the agenda. Upon completion of that report, there is no reportable action taken. Thank you very much, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, City Attorney. With that, I'm gonna open it to the audience. Anyone who would like to speak on the closed session items. Okay, we are adjourned. Para las personas que necesitan traducciones en español, levanten sus manos si necesitan traducción. Okay, thank you. All right. So with that, let's go ahead and start the regular meeting. Okay, good evening, everyone. Again, we are going to start our Southgate City Council regular meeting. At this time, can I have Sne please do the invocation and our Chief of Police will do the last.
Please rise and bow your heads with us. Heavenly Father, we just ask you for your blessing for the City of Southgate, for the residents here, the employees, the council members, all involved with the work of the city. We thank you, Lord, for all that they give us and all that you provide for us, Lord. We ask a special protection for our first responders or officers in the field that you look after them each and every day. We ask all this in your son's precious name. Amen.
Amen.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Place your right hand over your heart. Ready? Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. Mayor Dabila?
Present.
Vice Mayor Barone?
Present.
Councilmember Avalos?
Present.
Councilmember Ortado?
Present.
Councilmember Rios?
Present.
City Treasurer de la Paz?
Present.
City Manager Houston?
Present.
City Attorney Salinas? Okay. Item number one. We have public hearing.
The City Council will consider A, adopting a resolution establishing a new schedule of fees for city services effective fiscal year 2526; B, authorizing the mayor to execute the resolution in a form acceptable to the City Attorney; and C, rescinding Resolution Number 202151 CC. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. City Manager?
All right, if we want to get straight at things this evening, we've got a presentation on our fee schedule and we'll pass that over to Administrative Services Director Lewis to give us a short presentation.
Okay, great.
All right. Good evening, Mayor and members of the City Council. Lewis Frosta, the Director of Administrative Services. Tonight, I'm presenting the proposed master fee schedule for fiscal year 2526 and requesting your approval of the resolution establishing the updated fees for city services and rescinding the city's prior fee resolution from 2021. Little bit of an introduction here. So the master fee schedule serves as a single city adopted document that lists all the fees for government services, permits, licenses, facility rentals. And this schedule is published to ensure transparency and cost recovery for specific services that benefit individuals or businesses rather than the general public. These schedules are periodically reviewed and updated by the City Council. The last time this was updated was in 2021. We'll get into that in a couple later slides. And so as part of this work, we're contracting with a company to do a deep dive of our master fee and charges schedule, and that work is scheduled to begin in about a month, assuming we can award a contract timely. And so this won't be the last time you'll see an item related to fees. Once that project or that work is done by the consultant, we'll engage stakeholders, including the City Council, and then after that engagement, we will bring another item to council after that. So we talked about what we need to do here, essentially is adopting a resolution and rescinding the prior one. So back in 2021 was the last time that the fee schedule was updated. And as you can imagine, since then, everything's gone up, labor, benefits, operating costs. And the fee schedule or the fees that support a lot of these services haven't been adjusted. And so every year that we don't do a CPI increase, which we should be doing annually, that gap continues to grow between the cost to serve, the cost to provide services, and the fee revenue that we receive. So we calculated the net change in the CPI between October 2021 and June 2025, and that CPI net change is 16.3. We're proposing a 7% baseline adjustment to that rather than the full 16%. We felt that going the full 16% in one one foul swoop was gonna be pretty impactful. And so there were targeted updates. You'll see throughout the fee schedule that although the majority of them were adjusted by that 7%, there were some that were above that 7%, just depending on the type of fee it was and the type of cost recovery we needed to do. But the majority of them was 7%. That's kind of the average. There were, there are some fees that are voter approved or that are set by statute and regulation that we can't change, and so we noted that in the fee schedule. We did have, we did do a little bit of a projection on what we think the fees will generate in terms of additional revenue. That is a conservative estimate, and so we'll talk about that. It's about $500,000 that we're projecting in terms of general fund impact. The estimated increase in revenue takes into account that, again, the 7% fee. It's looking at actuals. So when we did the projection of the $500,000, we used fiscal year 2324 numbers to project that number out. So what we did is we looked at the revenue we actually incurred in the prior year. We applied the higher fees schedule to those numbers, and that's how we estimated that $500,000 impact. Here, it's just kind of a breakout of that. So you'll see that in terms of, it's kind of hard to see here, but permits going up about $118,000. Fines and forfeiture, which is just a general category for most of our fines, is going up $100,000. That's primarily through an increase in parking citation fees. And then your regular fees and charges is about the bulk of that, which is $288,000. This is just a visual of that. Again, the blue is prior year. The red or maroon is what we would anticipate if this fee schedule were adopted. So in summary, we're proposing that this fee schedule be adopted. Because of the way the law works, this fee schedule would be in effect 60 days from today if the council were to approve. I'm hoping for any questions that the council may have.
Can I open it to the audience?
Mayor, if it's okay, I just add one little end note to the presentation. Big picture, this is part of a multi-pronged effort to look to tighten our belts, to look to all revenue sources we can, and to to all revenue sources we can and to find efficiencies where we can, overall throughout city operations, to try to reduce the structural deficit that was pointed out during our budget hearings about a month and a half ago. We have a seriously large, excuse me, budget structural deficit. And so we're struggling to find a way to right the ship, and we have to look at every option. So this is just one of the many things we're doing. And we'll be outlining over time all the different steps we're taking. But here, you know, you typically look at what are the best practices other cities do to balance their books? And having fees to cover costs are part of services that's, you know, if you want to rent a city facility, it costs money, rent a field. If you are going to do a building project, there's fees. This is normal. But it's also normal to every year increase those fees by a certain factor. And due to the fact that, you know, my understanding is perhaps during the COVID period, there was a reluctance to add that cost. We ended up now four years in with no increase. So as, so as we talk about a structural deficit, in an attempt to be kind to the community and our customers, you know, let's hold off on the fees, we're just delaying. We start falling behind. We end up creating a bigger gap. And then how do we fix that? So this is a measured step. We could be doing 16% if we really want to get back to where we are, doing seven. But it, instead of the full gap being filled, we're only partially filling it. So I just want to emphasize that this is part of the broader process to look for all revenue sources to see how we can limit our structural deficit.
Thank you. At this time, I'm going to open it to the audience. Anyone would like to comment? Comment on this item, please come forward. This is a public hearing. Please come up. Is it on this item that we're talking about the fees? Yes. No, 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 no. This is a public hearing. Not yet, not yet.
Good evening. Liz Reese on Kaufman. I just want to give my reluctant support because nobody likes having the fees increased. But unfortunately, because of the state of our budget, you know, it's an unnecessary, I don't know if it would call it evil, but it's just an unnecessary action for us to all undertake. And just to give my two cents when it comes to the city clerk fees, public records request fees, as an environmental scientist, having worked in due diligence for several years, I would do research on properties, and that meant actually submitting hundreds of, maybe thousands of, public records requests throughout the country. And so I can say that it wasn't uncommon to pay for electronic copies as well because it's my understanding that cities or agencies have to recoup the time spent even getting those records together. And so for those who are concerned about getting those, not having to pay those fees, as a, as part of my research, I would actually go in person, review the records and take pictures. And so all the clerks had to do was give me the files, and then I would look through them, take pictures of what I needed, and wouldn't have to pay a thing. Some places still charged for that, but most didn't. And so as far as, you know, those complaining about the fees, I mean, we need to get paid, you know? And unfortunately, you know, somebody has to front the bill, so thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Okay, and I'm going to close the public hearing. Do we have any emails?
We have one email, Madam Mayor. It's from Mario Dominguez, who called the City Council to take four actions. The first one is to eliminate fees for emailed public records requests. The second is to adopt a quenbe fee for ordinance to fund parks and recreation. Number three is to remove the $3 bicycle license fee. And the fourth is to stop the increase in the body worn camera footage fee. He said these charges are unfair to residents and reflect poor management. By City Hall. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, bringing it back to council. Council, you have any questions?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Go ahead, Councilwoman.
I just had one question, but I think Rob answered it. I did ask if this increase was going to affect all of our departments. And it was straight across the board for all of the departments. So yes, thank you.
Madam Mayor. Go ahead.
Yeah, so I took a look at all the items, and I understand the need for it. But there's a couple that I'd like to address. One is on page 56 of the packet. And I'm talking about the written number. All the, if you guys don't have the book, maybe you do. Page 56, it'll be the number down here. Is there? Okay, there it is. And that has to do with the preferential parking fee. And the reason I have a little bit of a question on that one is because people who have preferential parking on their block is because they've already been inconvenienced by either businesses nearby or apartment buildings nearby that are causing a parking issue on their block. And to have to increase an additional cost for them just doesn't seem fair. So I'm okay with what we're doing here, but I would like to hold back on adding that fee for them. The other is on page 63. That's code enforcement fines. And part of what I think happens is this, let's say that you have a resident who received the citation for having an unmaintained lawn. They're given 30 days. They don't have to pay anything. There's no, there's no penalty if they address the issue within 30 days. But if we have to go out there every six months and give them another 30 days, that just doesn't seem right because it's staff time that has to go and review this. So I'd like to introduce something that addresses that, where once you got a notification, you got 30 days to fix it, you fixed it. If we have to go back every five, six months, it just doesn't seem fair because it's a cost to our staff having to go out there.
What's the current rate, Councilmember?
Let's see. I'll tell you right now.
I'm looking on page 63, and I can't find it.
Yeah, hang on. And if staff wants to help out in getting that number, would be great because I'm scrolling down. It's on 63.
Page 63, that's written in, but at the bottom of the page in text, it's 19?
It's a bottom quarter of the page. So the first offense for code enforcement is $115. We have a second offense at $230, and a third offense at $575. But the second offense, and again, this is what was told the last time, if things have changed, you want to chime in because you and I had this conversation.
Yeah, I think, I think it's something that, it's an interesting concept that we don't have our head around quite at this point. We, we're going to review it with staff, but I think the understanding is, I took it from you, and it does happen occasionally, you have a repeat offender. So the example could be park car on lawn, or maybe, you know, not maintaining lawn, or whatever the issue is. Staff have to go out there, you know, neighbors maybe don't like that. They call it in. Staff have to go out there, they address it, they have to check back after, you know, 30 days hasn't been resolved. Yes, it has. And then within the same calendar year or the same year, three months later, neighbors call again, car's parked on lawn, or the lawn's untidy or something, we go back out again. At this point, our normal policy is that's a first offense again. And conceptually, if you had a repeat offender that keeps doing this, is the, is the thought that maybe there is a timeframe that it could be a second offense or a third. So we were going to look into that, maybe check a few other cities to see if there's any best practice of that concept. Again, I think it's pretty rare, but it does make sense in those rare occasions that it, perhaps the first offense over and over again is not enough deterrent in those cases. So we would like to look into it. We did, as Louis mentioned, we are getting a more refined look at the fees that would be done in the next few months, and then we'd be coming back. So it could be something that we could attach to that return with a concept on that area.
Yeah. Because I did want to make sure that we all understood what second offense means. It might mean something different to you than it does to us. Okay? And those are the, let's see. Oh, and this is for the police. I didn't see anything that addresses like the electric vehicles on the sidewalks and all that. Is that covered anywhere?
Yeah, just talked to the traffic division. We're working on a education campaign. In fact, we have a draft written, so there's no fines that, that doesn't preclude us from adding it later. So we're trying to get some clarity on the law and what we can and can't do. But we, we actually have a program set up here. I just spoke to the traffic lieutenant just before I came in here, so that'll be launched in the next two weeks.
Yeah, and the same thing for the skateboards, the electric ones?
Same concept, electric vehicles.
Yeah. Okay. All right. That's all I have.
Anyone else? Go ahead, Councilwoman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So these are basically transaction fees, right? I mean, for like, for plan check, for solar energy, for ADUs, development, any fees, right? That's, that's not something that...
It's all things, parking fees, it's rental facilities, it's every type of fee you can imagine.
And is it consistent with some of the standard fees in surrounding cities for those?
Yes.
So we kind of look at that?
This is the same fee list that we've had for many, many years. We didn't add any fees. We simply took the existing rates that in the past get increased every year by cost living, but they hadn't been, and just made an adjustment.
But we didn't check with any other cities, see if they were kind of consistent with others.
Actually, we're behind.
We're behind.
We're behind in most of our fees, but the study that's starting shortly is going to look at exactly that to see if it makes sense. Like, we might have a certain permit that the fee got created for, say, reviewing an ADU 10, you know, seven years ago, and they did a full calculation of how much staff time does it take and what's all the paper costs? And they, they come up with a fee, they can reassess that now, when, not for this purpose, this is just a quick adjustment. But we'll look at each fee and see what is the actual current cost. Has it got less expensive or more?
So we could adjust it later?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's...
And these are just basically recovery fees, right, for the...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Covering the cost.
Thank you.
Vice Mayor? No?
Well, yeah, just have a comment and just maybe ask our city attorney if I'm allowed to comment, if I live on a preferential parking district regarding the comment that was made by Councilmember...
You could. So I would say not to go down that path.
Okay.
I have something to say on that. Again, it's only 7%. It's not that huge of a difference where I think in code enforcement, that's something that we can look at. So I'd like to make a motion to approve, with the exception of the code enforcement.
Yeah, and I'm okay with that because I think that we're going to look at all the costs anyway. I was just looking at the double whammy we got. People are addressing their parking issues, and then you force them to get a tick, these parking permits, and then you have to raise the fee for that, for protecting the block. But again, I don't live in an area like that. Okay.
Councilmember, sorry, just want to clarify what the, is the motion to approve the master fee schedule as it is and not increase?
With the exception of code enforcement.
So leaving those as is, as they are?
I think, I think to, what I'm getting is, there was a mention of perhaps freezing one of the fees, counterproposal of not freezing the preferential parking. And then we had talked about a concept of looking at this, how to handle, from a policy perspective, a repeat offender. But the actual fee that's being proposed to have a slight increase for the code enforcement fine, we could still increase. Would that be correct?
That's fine.
Yeah, okay.
I'll second that.
Okay. Can I get a roll call, please? Councilmember Avalos? Yes. Councilmember Ortado?
Yes.
Councilmember Rios?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Barone?
Yes.
Mayor Davila?
Yes.
Motion passes. Okay, now we are on to comments from the audience. Anyone that would like to speak on anything that it's not on the agenda, please come forward.
The complaint I got is that the water, the water, the new water meter? I got some bills here from the previous month, and two of them are $33 a month, the other one is $37. The last one was $43. But with the new meter, I got $126. I want to know what's going on with that meter. It's brand new. You want me to pay for the meter too, or what?
Mayor, we just need the name, as we ask everyone.
Yes, please. Thank you, City Attorney. Can we have your name for the record?
My name is Juan Rosas Castañeda. I live on 2450 Illinois Avenue for the past 50 years.
Okay. Thank you.
We can, yes.
Louis, can you please provide him with your information?
You take care of the meters? I already, I already paid it.
Okay, if, if you don't, right now, we can, we can hear your concerns. We cannot, you know, go back and forth with answers or questions. That's why the director has given you his number. If you can, please give him a call. But also if we can get your information so they can call you tomorrow.
See, I wondered if everybody is getting high bill like I did, or just myself.
Yeah, I mean, he will take care of that.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Claudia Rivera. I always watch the council meetings, and I even participated in the past. But on the last meeting, Councilperson Avalos stated no more special treatment for groups. So I hope this means that she's making a pledge to stop the political attacks, the harassment, the lies, and the smear campaigns that has happened in the past. Sadly, I doubt it. Just by seeing what item made is very disappointed, to say the least. However, I will make sure that my family, my friends, and neighbors who supported you the last time know about this and the type of person that you would think of even appointing. Thank you.
Next person, please.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council, city staff. My name is Anna, and I'm the Director of the Southgate Chamber of Commerce. First off, I want to say thank you so much for joining the job fair last week. It was a full success. We did have 452 people attend, and we did 106 headshots, professional headshots to the community members. We know that's usually pretty expensive, so we were able to cover that fee. Northgate has been giving out to our community vouchers for food security and security, and I just want to give them a shout out. Thank you to Northgate for the continued support. I had a really nice conversation with the team, and they've been supporting a lot of our local schools with these vouchers. So if the families out in our community have benefited, you know, kudos to them. So save the date. State of the City address is coming. It is going to be hosted on Thursday, November 6, 2025, and it will be a luncheon at the Henry C. Gonzalez Auditorium. More information will be provided for that. And lastly, we are 96 days from our Children's Christmas Lane Parade. So that will be hosted December 14, of course, hopefully on Tweedy Boulevard since it's all revamped. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hey, good evening, guys. Mayor, my name is Sonia. I originally lived in Inglewood for the past, well, my whole life, and I am a resident from Southgate now for the past four years. I am coming to my concern, I did email some of the members this past week regarding the concerns of State Street and Illinois Street. We just had an accident, and unfortunately, our community member, he ended up passing away. He didn't make it. And that is lack of the pedestrian walk, and I feel like it is a big concern. I currently live in 9234 State Street, so I am very close to Southern and State Street. And I do want to thank you guys for taking action and actually putting a light pole because it has avoided so many accidents. Like I said, I've been there for four years, and every day, two, three times during the day, there is always a car accident right in that corner. So I feel like you guys could do it again. And I currently take my son to St. Helen's Elementary School. And I fortunately, that's, that's my way to the school every day. And I do have a video of, of, that I recorded today of how far I have to walk to the street in order for the cars to stop. Um, and I did take a picture of the crosswalk that you can't even see, no lines. Um, I did oppose that perhaps putting a traffic light where, you know, we're going to go ahead, ready to walk. You press the light and the light, you know, perhaps turns red. Uh, but I was told due to money or budget, it could probably be something impossible. Um, but I do want to mention that there is other alternatives that we could perhaps uh take action if not adding like the streetlights, I mean, the street signs or, or even repaint the, the, the street again. Um, just because, I mean, like I mentioned, I do have a video of how much I have to walk into the street for the cars to, to pass. Um, and yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council. Ramonda Velazquez, Independence Avenue. Uh, just before any announcements, you know, I'll be, I will be leaving right after the comments, but I will be following on YouTube live to see how the meeting is going. Um, just a few announcements, upcoming events that are happening with the Kiwanis Club of Southgate. Uh, we all love Chick-fil-A, right? We have our great new Chick-fil-A location out there. Well, guess what? Tomorrow, we have a Kiwanis rally between three to nine P M. Where if you purchase over there, uh, they are going to be giving us some of their proceeds to our uh youth fund. So we have a separate service account to support our youth program. So from three to nine, you can go to Chick-fil-A in Southgate, purchase yourself one, two, five, twenty, you know, chicken sandwiches. And as long as you use the code, uh, the initials of Chick-fil-A, you know, so C F A S G, like as in Southgate, uh, then proceeds will go to our service account. So tomorrow, three to nine P M. And if Chick-fil-A is not your thing, if you're more of a pizza person, well, then you can join us on September the twenty-fourth, at Shaky's in Huntington Park, uh, between six and nine, where they will be giving us twenty-five percent of their sales, as long as you put the receipts in there uh, for our service account as well. So, you know, I know that you all have your meetings and everything, and if you're tired and you just want something good to eat late at night, you've got two options right there. Uh, as most of you know, we have a Kiwanis cleanup every month. It's typically the third sun, the third Saturday of every month. We are looking for locations, uh, and while we are looking for future months, we actually need a location for September. So we're looking for a public area uh to clean up that is also suitable for our youth. And yes, we do have middle school and elementary school students that attend at times, so no place that's too severe. So, you know, like bottles, no, no, none of that stuff. But if you have any places in mind, please let us know, southgatekiwanis@gmail.com. And the last thing, um, and I guess this one is more directed to our city manager. Your I T department or whoever handles the at sogate.org uh accounts. Unfortunately, our emails get bounced back whenever we send anything to any public official, um, including our own member Darren. So sometimes I have to use my own personal email to get ahold of Darren or I have to just text them directly. Um, we've had similar issues with other groups, but they've been able to fix it. I'm hoping that you could talk to whomever your I T guy is or person is and make sure that if you can email address, okay, I'll email you. But, uh, you know, the email is southgatekiwanis@gmail.com because we get a lot of bounce backs, you know, so we just wanted to point that out because we don't necessarily, we don't spam anyone. We just send out our respective announcements for meetings and then any major events. And we'd like to let our public officials know. We can't even send it to the city clerk and the city clerk is typically there to receive it, you know. So that's it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Uh, next, please.
Hello, again, Liz Ruiz on Kaufman. Um, I just wanted to respond to some of the comments um that have been said ongoing in the last few meetings related to the um, our parks uh partner organizations. And I just want to reiterate, um, as a, as a Parks Commissioner, as Vice Chair for the Parks Commission, I want to reiterate the importance of working with our partner organizations and to emphasize that they are volunteers and that we should keep that in mind because there's always um comments out on the internet saying that, you know, making them sound like they're going to make money out of the programs they run when in fact um, all of our partner organizations are run by volunteers. Nobody gets paid. They're giving us their service as a, um, and, you know, and it's invaluable. There are community members or the parents of their future, you know, of the children who are future. And so I really um have been disappointed with the comments made by Councilmember Avalos related to auditing our buildings, um, because I don't think, I think it's a waste of time. I don't think it's going to add any information we don't already know. What we do know is, you know, the volunteers, the volunteer hours that are provided to our city are a gift. They're free. We don't pay for them. What is the outcome going to be that we raise fees for what? You know, um, our Parks Department already raises fees as it's needed. Uh, we get a report, you know, every so often regarding the, the fees and, and changes in fees. And as a Parks Commissioner, I have complete trust in our Parks Department on knowing how much to charge for the services provided and our partner organizations as well. And so I just want to really, you know, ask to, to drop this. It's, it's a waste of time. I think that these, this time and discussions around this can be spent better. Our, our staff is already um spread thin and for them, you know, to be asked to waste their time doing something like this is just, uh, it, it's, it really questions, makes me question um just the judgment behind all of this. Um, and if the, if the plan is to increase the fees um to cover our city budget, then, you know, how is that different than taxing the residents like Joshua mentioned? It's just, it, it, none, none of this makes sense to me. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, um, speaker?
One last thing. Um, the electric vehicle charger is out. Um, I don't know why or how that works, if, if they're supposed to be working, but just in case somebody didn't know, I don't know who to report those to.
No, we'll check them.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening, Council. My name is Candace Solache, Tweedy Boulevard. Um, and I just want to echo the sentiments um that Ms. Ruiz expressed and also kind of piggyback on that um and remind Ms. Avalos that yes, all these partner organizations are made up of volunteers and without these volunteers, the city could not afford to keep these programs alive. Um, so you really need to keep that in mind. You say that these attacks are not personal, but they are. And all of the audits, I really wish that you would have been on council when your sister was a city clerk so that you could have audited her um and all the money she was making and never being here. I really wish you were on the council. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Uh, good evening. Uh, Alan Flores, Chairman of the Parks and Rec Commission. Um, I do want to thank the words of, of Vice Commissioner Ruiz and Candace Escible. Um, both took the words out of my mouth, but I will repeat myself. Um, these organizations that we have, they're, they're very important. Not only is one organization important, but they're all important. Um, when these organizations are providing a service that the city itself can't spend the money on doing on its own, it's very important to support them with everything you have so that we can have these volunteers that want to come here. They want to do the job, just like I wanted to do the job way back twenty-five, thirty years ago. I wanted to be here. I, I lived here. I've, I've, I've been here since, since I was born in nineteen seventy-two. I've, I've enjoyed the city of Southgate. I lived in the city of Southgate. I could have went anywhere, but I bought my house in nineteen ninety-eight in the city of Southgate. I believe in these organizations. Again, not just one organization, I believe in all these organizations. Not everybody wants to play baseball. Not everybody wants to play uh basketball. They want to swim. They want to play soccer. They want to play football. We support all these organizations equally, one hundred percent equally. There's not one organization that's better than the other one. There's bigger organizations, but we love them all just the same, just like our children. We want them to enjoy themselves. We don't want them to force them to play in one organization. We want them to have a variety. We want them to say, Dad, I want to play soccer. Be like, oh, no, sorry, we don't support the soccer program. We, we're part of the J A A. We're part of the aquatics team. Nobody says that, right? We say, okay, you want to play soccer? How do we do this? We go to our organizations and we find out how, how we make them play soccer. We don't attack one organization. We don't attack all organizations. We thank them. We tell them, we appreciate the hard work you're doing. Whatever, whatever it takes to support that organization, here you go. You need a swim stadium? Here you go. You need Cub Scout huts? Here you go. You need to use basketball courts? Here you go. We do that and nobody blinks an eye. Nobody should blink an eye. We should support it, uplift it, give them more if you have to. The last thing, all the slander that goes on, these org, these websites, police scanner attacking our, our, our city uh, council people because they're part of a certain organization is wicked, very, very wicked. You have people on there that are just making outrageous comments, not even knowing how their organizations work. And it's just, it just attacks and brings down the integrity of the city. You have people like Robert Montalvo who are just attacking whenever they can. They just jump on it. I know it's part of an issue, but I, I don't support people who just make comments without digging into it. Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone else? Okay, non-agenda items, are you sure? Is there anyone else that want to speak on something that it's not on the agenda?
Good evening. My name is Maria Hernandez. I first want to start by saying thank you to those that replied to an email that I sent out about two weeks ago in regards to the Circle Park community. I am here on behalf of the residents that are um part of the Circle Park um community, but that are backing towards the Circle Park. Um, I did write an email to all of you and I, and I included it, included all of you in, in that email. And thank you to Mr. Barron and Mr. Hurtado and Mr. Rios for communicating and really wanting to hear the community's voice and so forth. Mr. Barron, thank you so much for making the time to come out to our community and reaching out and making sure that you were listening to the voices of our community in person. Our community felt very well heard and so forth and beyond. But I just wanted to come here to really talk about the concern because a lot of you haven't had a chance to either, either visit Circle Park or visit the community that this park is going to be affecting. Now, I do want to say and acknowledge that we appreciate the wonderful park that's coming to be there. Um, there's a lot of things that are happening that are exciting for that community, um, including Pickable. But I did want to mention um our concerns, our concerns in regards to the backing to that park. We are part of those residents that our gate, our back gate is that access to that back park. When I first bought that house about twenty-something years ago, that back access was the big thing. I was like, oh, my gosh, look at, we have access to that park. And it was nice for our children to be able to have it. And now that the remodeling has been happening and Paul Adams is no longer with us and so forth, which was leading the project at some point, um, a lot of things shifted and changed in regards to that project, and that's why now we are concerned. Um, Paul Adams made a really good effort in regards to doing outreach, community outreach, listening to our feedback, our thoughts, our ideas, and he was pivoting the project based on that feedback. Years went by, um, me being involved with Southgate and, and being part of a lot of different things. I trusted that City of Southgate documented all those um comments and feedback that, that the community gave to Paul Adams. And later on, found out that as the project was progressing, that Paul Adams is no longer with us here in the city of Southgate, but that we have new members that were leading the work. Um, a lot of our neighbors started coming that were being impacted, um, saying, hey, Maria, what's going on? I thought we agreed to X, Y, and Z. Nothing of what we agreed on with Paul Adams happened. Everything has shifted and changed and now, change, I'm sorry, and now it's a big concern to our, our community in regards to safety. We have no access. We have no um wall to be able to support what the concerns are.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone else? Okay, I can bring it back to staff? Oh, no, uh, emails.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I received an email from Mr. Mario Dominguez who requested that the city install bike racks on its public transportation vans to improve bike accessibility for residents. He emphasized the need for safer travel across major city bridges and better access to parks. He noted that Southgate is currently not a bike-friendly city. Um, I also received a public comment um from a group of Southgate youth organizations. Um, it was actually a letter, um, including um the Southgate Junior Athletic Association, Southgate Aztecs Youth Football, Southgate AYSO Region Six Five Two, Southgate Aqua Coalition, and Southgate Boy and Cub Scout. They submitted a joint letter urging the city council to protect affordable access to city, I'm sorry, to facilities that support youth programs. They highlighted the longstanding value of these programs in promoting leadership, health, and community engagement among local children. The letter expressed strong concern over Councilwoman Maria Delpilar Avalos's suggestion to raise facility fees due to the city's budget deficit, arguing that such increases would unfairly harm families with limited resources while contradicting Southgate's vision and mission statements. While they criticized Councilman Al Rios for not voicing support, they thanked Mayor Davila, Vice Mayor Barron, and Councilmember Hurtado for their continued support. The organizations called on city council to prioritize youth and reaffirmed their commitment to equity, inclusion, and community investment by keeping facility access affordable to all children. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, so with that, Arturo?
Yes, Mayor, thanks for the opportunity. I wanted to just address the comments from the audience regarding the charger station. I assume that it's over at the Civic Center, so we, we'll take a look at that and get that repaired. With regards to the complaints about the change out in water meters, I do want to mention that the city is taking an aggressive program to upgrade our water meters to the latest in technology. We're wrapping up a project right now that is changing out another eighteen hundred meters. When the meters are renewed, sometimes we find out that the ones before that weren't registering accurately. And so the new ones register higher. The numbers a gentleman mentioned could be a concern because that's significantly higher. So if for whatever reason, in this case, we changed out the meter and the meter turns, it turns out to be faulty, we'll take a look at that, but we'll work with finance to, to um, address that. With regards to the Circle Park, just very briefly, I, I do want to mention that and recognize that uh the park launched with a design that was largely driven by the public. There was a concept and it was initially managed by Parks and Rec and they took it through the end of design. At the completion of design, they turned it over to Public Works to take it into construction, at which point in time we had to pursue permitting. So in the process, we learned Southern California Edison did not um um approve some of the amenities. And yes, there were some changes, but largely the majority of the changes that I saw were actually a reduction in intensity of facilities near that area like the basketball court that used to be two halves, now it's just one. So there's actually less activity because of the changes that were made. We did not go out back to the public to talk about those, but the goal at the end of the day is to construct a project that has a large amount of input from the public that is acceptable to the property owner, Southern California Edison, in terms of what we can and cannot do on their uh property. And so with that, we are getting pretty close to completing construction of Circle Park. We're looking at end of this month for substantial completion, so we're promising Steve that, that we're going to be ready for the grand opening, the ribbon cutting on October thirteenth. It's October thirteenth, so things are going well. I also wanted to mention that the residential resurfacing project is making lots of progress. We've now completed resurfacing all of the residential streets that were included except Frontage Road East. We were just started construction on that this week on the sidewalk reconstruction, so we're looking forward to that being completed in the next uh few weeks. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Uh, can you address the crosswalk issue or with that?
Can you address the crosswalk issue or would that be just South Gate PD? Because they can also add additional, you know, checking, huh? Yeah, for the...
I will address it very limited because of the legal predicament and the accident and what have you. In essence, there's an intersection there that has certain traffic controls and we've heard from the public, there are some improvements that we do have planned for the area, like the restriping. It's something that's already part of our day-to-day maintenance. But at this point in time, the city attorney and staff have gone out to take a look at the intersection. And so we were hearing the public loud and clear. We're looking at the intersection closely. And I think that's at this point in time, all I can mention. Maybe I'll turn it over to city attorneys. Is there anything else?
No, I, you know, I think it's tragic what happened in that intersection. Anytime there's a fatality in a street here, we did take a look at it. There's information where we're not able to disclose about what the cause of that was. It's not, it's my opinion that it was not anything having to do with the striping of the streets or the condition of the streets or just some things that are driver error. And in my opinion, that's what we have in this case. It's not a function of the street itself. That being said, it's not uncommon to have residents come in, as they should whenever they believe that there's something wrong with the streets. And I do know that the Public Works Department has already planned on improvements regarding striping in that area, which aren't related to anything that happened in the accident. They're just part of our ongoing maintenance there and those will continue to move forward as they were previously scheduled. And I think that the residents there will be able to see changes in that area in the not-too-distant future. It's also common, I think, for residents to suggest, well, put a light here, put a signal there, paint a signal. All those things are actually the subject of a required design evaluation by the appropriate officials, because the city council just can't put on a light without having appropriate review and engineering standards that are handled by the Public Works Department there. We've done that in the past. Everything is always evaluated on a regular basis. And I do think that the residents will see improvements on the striping that were part of the ongoing capital improvement project that the city has laid out.
Thank you. The only reason I brought it up is because we are familiar with that, but when a resident comes in and addresses an issue, I don't want them to feel that what was the point? And so now you both addressed this, so I hope that helps you out a little bit. Okay. You gave a thumbs up, by the way.
Thank you. Steve?
Good evening, Madam Mayor and council members. A couple of announcements. We'll start on the fun side. In front of you, you should all have an invitation to come join us at the new teen center location we're putting together as part. We've converted some space in the girls clubhouse to put together a room for teens. We're going to be revamping that type of programming for the city. We, in our recent hires for the department, we've hired someone who has a large specialty in teens, so she worked many years in another city doing it. So we're hoping to kick off the teen programming across the board. And we've done some work on that teen center in the area of the girls clubhouse. So September 15th, three to six. Come on out for that. Second, we have an issue right now with our pool due to what started off as a power outage in the city cascaded down to some other things and we've got issues at our pool. It is currently closed and most likely it will stay closed through the end of September. We just, there's some major problems that took place and we're going to have to fix them before we can reopen the pool. We're hoping to be up and running first weekend in October, maybe the 6th of October. We're not positive yet. We're waiting for a couple more evaluations from our pool consultants, but we are down for this time Friday. Lastly, I know it's a little ahead of time, but we do have Halloween coming back up, October 31st. And while it may seem a little early, we are also adding to this year's Halloween a fireworks show. As we know that due to other considerations, we had to cancel our 4th of July event. And for us to recoup part of that, the changes we made there, we needed to have a timeframe to allow us to put on the fireworks show instead of trying to reinvent another event for it. We just added it to our Halloween event, which is one of our biggest days of the year anyways. So 8:45 on Halloween night, we will have a fireworks show for the whole community.
All right.
And that's all I have.
Great, thank you. Gabe?
Madam Mayor, no updates from community development?
Thank you. Luis?
No other updates from administrative services.
John?
Keeping with that run, no updates from human resources.
Okay, chief?
Mayor, council, this past Thursday, we graduated three police officer recruits. That'll start in field training shortly. The good news is that brings us up to 78 officers and there's an additional three officers in backgrounds that look very promising. Once we get through those three, then we'll be at full staffing, which is the first thing that's, the first time that's happened probably in the last 12 years. So the admin staff has done a wonderful job getting our police officers up to speed in the hiring. We're hiring the best and I'm glad that we're looking good on that front. We do have a car show coming up in two weeks at the South Gate Park, the 30th Annual Car Show, so we're looking to see all the council members out there. I'll have my motorcycle and my truck out there. I won't tell you what it is, just in case you guys vote for it, right? And then in keeping with Halloween, we have our trunk or treat scheduled for Thursday the 30th, which is the day before the Halloween event, same location in front of City Hall. And yes, we are having the Pageant of the Trees. We have our first planning meeting coming up here shortly. So that's good news. Good events coming up and looking forward to them.
Great, thank you. City manager, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to, maybe I sound like, oh, sound more and more like a broken record, but just to help emphasize some of these, as we spent a long time talking about the budget and the cost of operating a city and the desire to keep costs low. And then looking at the amazing facilities the city does have, South Gate Park, we have a huge auditorium, we've got tennis courts, basketball courts, playgrounds, and indoors, Olympic-sized pool indoors. Just great facilities that dwarf so many surrounding communities like ours. Wonderful, community gets great use of it, but very expensive to operate. And as they get older and older, our pools, would it be 50 years old?
No, our pool is rebuilt in 2008.
Okay, well, but the pool itself is old, but the last rebuild was 2008. But so we're at 17 years. Anybody has a home or their own operations, the age starts happening. So, you know, it's probably, you know, several million dollars when you start having to revamp things. We're talking about hundreds of thousands of dollars right now to revamp. Where's the money come from? And we have things like roofs failing, HVAC systems that we're trying to keep up and we're doing some band-aiding. But there's a lot of facilities, roadways, as people see millions and millions of dollars. And so that's the kind of operations that as much as we try to tighten our belts, find efficiencies, you know, motors fail, electricity fails, we do have to fund that somehow. So we'd love to have enough funds someday where we can be proactive with all this maintenance and do extra. I know Steve had sent a list in last year saying, here's some proactive maintenance for, you know, $400,000 that would probably help the pool equipment. But we're trying to save, you know, an $8 million gap. So can we afford to do even a small amount of this? Not easily, but then the repercussions are, we start getting failures. Streetlights are millions of dollars to try to revamp all those, that equipment. Because we can't afford it, we get failures and then we're scrambling. So those are the kind of choices we have now that you can see the impacts on. I think we just be mindful as we look for solutions going forward, that I don't think anyone thinks keeping a pool operational is some frivolous luxury. It's really just keeping the team and the operations and the community served. But where the funding comes from will be part of our conversation with the community over the course of the fall and the spring as we figure out solutions together. But these are just another example of that, that effort that we're trying to work on together.
Thank you, city manager. City attorney?
City attorney, last time I checked, yes. No, nothing. Thank you very much.
Thank you. City treasurer?
Madam Mayor, nothing new to report.
Thank you. City clerk?
Nothing to report, Madam Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Avalos?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I'd like to thank everyone that's here in council, as well as those that are on YouTube. This last week, I had the pleasure of attending the Rotary. The district governor was here, it was a really nice event. He had a lot of insight and is looking to grow the district, specifically here in South Gate, so I look forward to that. I have to give it to Henry Gonzalez Jr. He did a really good job in bringing a lot of the community and businesses together for the visit. I also want to take a personal moment of thanking Northgate. They have been a great partner. The donations that they made, they didn't just make them on their own, but the community came together, donated money, and Northgate matched it. So I want to make sure that all of the schools that received it really understand that, that it wasn't just Northgate, but it was also the community giving back to the community, specifically our immigrant community. So hopefully those principals that receive them will make good use of them and they'll go to our immigrant community. So thank you, Northgate, for your donation and your support to our beautiful city of South Gate. I will be attending this week, vector control, so in the next council meeting, I'll be providing that. So at no point has anyone from the JAA has made a meaningful response to any of my questions or questions that I believe lie at the heart of the personal attacks that I have been receiving. Unfortunately, this silence is not surprising. It allows a familiar and troubling pattern. When certain institutions are being challenged, they often respond with dialogue or no engagement, but with silence and personal attacks and frankly baseless invitations that ignore the core concerns. Let me be clear. I formally requested evaluation, and I am requesting it again now, on the record, that I have not received a response to the requested evaluation and documentation. I would like now to speak on leadership and second chances. I want to state this very clearly. I do not believe in blacklisting people because they have said critical things about me in the past or disagree and act like a dictator. That's not leadership. I believe in growth, in second chances, and in the power of honest dialogue that bring people together. People can do and can evolve, and I stand firmly on that belief. We all have the ability to change when mistakes have been done in the past. This recent appointment being discussed or that was brought up, it is not based on personal history or to stop someone from criticizing me. It's about context. Since ICE began targeting our community more aggressively, the need for accurate, timely, and trusted communication has never been more urgent. The individual in question has previously served on the commission and has demonstrated, both through experience and dedication to our community. Recently, a sitting commissioner offered feedback at the Parks and Research Committee saying, maybe if you had someone there, you wouldn't have so many unanswered questions. Well, I'm listening. And that's exactly why I made this appointment. We need people who can help us bring clarity, accountability, and directly communicate insightfully into these spaces. Now, speaking on trust and positive civic engagement and action, we must meet people where they are, not only through official statements, but through real outreach and meaningful actions. As an elected official, I will not, and I refuse to lead with hate. I will not discourage anybody from serving because of old wounds, social media disputes, or personal vendettas. If someone is experienced and actively contributing, they deserve consideration. Many of us have stood up and said, there are resources available to help during ICE crisis. But again, I ask, where are they? What do they look like in practice? If we make these claims, we must also ensure that we are delivering them. How many of you have publicly posted or shared information on where neighbors are being detained? How many of you have helped a family find legal help to navigate the fear of separation and deportation? I ask these questions because there is a lot going on behind the scenes that not everyone is posting about. Over 20 community members have personally told me that they've received timely, essential updates through this individual's efforts. When people tell me someone is helping them navigate the fear, the confusion, and the real danger, I listen. People avoided places where they might have been at a high risk, being detained. This individual helped provide information, and to this, I listen. It is not about me. It is all about the well-being of our community. This week, unfortunately, the Supreme Court lifted key protections that would stand, and at this point, we are all standing on the edge of a very dangerous time. I asked my colleagues, how many families have come to you to say that they've chosen to self-deport out of fear? I've had several. Yeah. How many of you have sat down to help someone make those impossible decisions of who stays, who's going to pay, and who's going to cover? I will now speak on civility and public discourse. When we single out individuals out of unfairly, we encourage public, we discourage public participation, silence voices, and erode the trust in our process. The attacks against this individual have not been about policy or qualifications.
There's no comments, please.
They've been vague, personal, and in some cases have crossed the line into veiled threats. This is unacceptable. This is not who South Gate is. Comparing someone to Mussolini is not a critique. It's a character assassination, and it is deeply irresponsible. Free speech does not protect targeted harassment. We all must do better. I recognize that some of this anger is rooted in personal hurt, and I respect those feelings. But I will not carry grudges. I will not participate in public bullying or exclusionary circles built on fear and negativity. No one here has reached out to me privately to express concerns about this appointment. Not one person. Instead, I have watched people use public forums to shame and humiliate. It is disgusting and shameful, and I ask myself, why? Why are we doing this publicly rather than engaging privately with honest and care? Now I call on better dialogue. Can you imagine if you or your family member or a loved one were defined forever by mistakes that they made in their past? What would you say if they were treated with contempt, dehumanized, and mocked? This is not a community that I believe in. I am asking us to choose better, something better. Let's commit to be more respectful, transparent, and inclusive dialogue, one rooted in a belief that we are here to serve our community, not our egos. So let us move forward with integrity, with compassion, and with a renewed focus on what really matters most, which is the well-being of our community. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councilman, trouble?
Okay, here we go. So Rotary Club had a really nice event. I've been to those before, but this one was really packed. A lot of really local business people who attended it, and they do fantastic work. As do the Kewanis, I don't want to leave them out of the conversation either. But anyhow, but it was a great event with the Rotary Club. Yeah, ICE raids might get worse before they get better. I'm not saying that to alarm anybody, but everybody has been hearing about the Supreme Court decision in any case. We hope to have more information for everybody, our community. Our community needs to be careful. I did get the email from the young lady, Sonia, but sometimes we can't respond right away because there's ongoing investigations and there are processes. So tonight, I hope you got a little bit of response as to what's going on. I also got the information from Maria Hernandez. I've known her for years. But I had to explain to her that because of where I live, it's too close to that. So I can't really engage in-- you know, I can always come and visit the Neighborhood Watch. I can go over there and talk and talk about a lot of different things. But when it comes to projects that take place in that area, I'm required by law to recuse myself, and I explained that to you. I hope that Joshua did the same when he went to go visit. I actually called him and I said, "Hey, look, I can't go." I was planning on going already anyway. I said, "Okay, good," because it's important that we get to hear the impacts. But I guess the takeaway on that is this, right? That I brought this up many, many years ago, and that is our lack of properly communicating with our residents. We actually have gotten a whole lot better, okay? We're making strides all the time, and this is another opportunity for us to learn. The fact that Paul Adams-- we replaced him with an amazing guy named Steve Costley. And now, I don't know how long he's going to be with us, but, you know, a lot of changes. I won't let them know you're leaving. Huh? You heard that out there? That was supposed to be me and him. But in any case, we can't always, you know, just ignore that some changes have taken place. And I want to make sure that we do a whole lot better and that staff is listening. Again, I can't give direction on anything from that area, but I'm sure staff is listening to that. And that's it. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councilman Rios?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Let's see. Yeah, I hope we-- just to follow up on Councilman Hurtado, that we-- you know, it looks like communication was with Paul Adams, and then some of it broke maybe with Steve. And is it the gas electric company? So I know that there's some concern there. Maybe we could find some compromise there, you know? And I know Josh was there. So hopefully, we could find something that'll-- you know, because it seems like communication-- well, things change too with time, so, yeah. But I know our staff is trying to address some of those issues, to address some of those concerns there. I attended the School Safety Collaborative with the mayor. Good meeting, good turnout. We had-- this is a meeting of all the principals from all the schools here and the school police and the chief and a number of other-- all the others, a lot of the folks that are here, whether it's Steve, of course, Costley. So it's always a good-- at the beginning of the year, to get all the principals together and hear what's going on in our schools here. We have close to 30 schools, huh, I think, Mayor? So that's great that we get them together and hear how we could work together. The issue of Crosswalk came up, the issue of-- and I know that we're having some issues there with funding that. Southeast, they have some issues over there, too. I know that we're looking to address those issues. So, yeah. But it's always good to bring-- I'm saddened to hear that the pool is closed. I mean, you know, because it does impact me and the community, a lot of the folks that-- it's very therapeutic for the community. And then we have the Aqua Club and all of those folks. So I'm sure that just the power of set it off. And I guess it's something mechanical. It sounds like serious stuff for it to take a whole-- because it looks like a whole month. First, initially, it was a week. Now it looks like a month. So, you know, whatever we could do to address it. Hopefully, it's not too costly. I mean, too costly, is that right?
We all caught it.
His name is Steve, you know, Costley. So anyways, but, yeah. So hopefully, we can address that. The job fair, Chamber of Commerce, Anna's here, and I know the veterans. They partnered with them and the city. It was a great event, good turnout for a Friday, huh? You know, you think that an employment kind of opportunity fair on a Friday in the afternoon, but wouldn't be so well-attended. Over 400 people showed up, so, you know, that's a good, great turnout. Because I went to one, a resource fair in Bell, and very few people showed up. So very good job, Anna and the veterans in the city making that happen. And we can thank our market here at Northgate for helping us. Some of our folks are struggling with food insecurity and giving us those vouchers. So that's all I have.
All right, great. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to go ahead and start off with just some events that are happening with our Sella Kiwanis. As some of you may know, I'm serving my second year as president, as president of the Sella Kiwanis. And we have, on September 30th, we have our Second Annual College Fair and Career Fair at the Southgate Auditorium, the Henry Gonzalez Auditorium. It starts from 5:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. We have over 27 universities, colleges, and workforce development organizations. They're going to be present to offer resources to our students in the Sella region. So it's open to any high school student all over Sella. So very proud of this. This is our second year we're able to do this. Last year, we were able to give $2,000 in scholarships away, and we were able to give also two laptops at the event. There is a registration form that's online at Sella Kiwanis Instagram and also on our selakiwanis.org website that you can go in and pre-register. And there's also a way to enter for the scholarship opportunities this year on that as well. On September 20th is going to be our Sella Day of Service. We do this on a monthly basis where we go to the Salvation Army here in the city of Bell and set up food bags that have been distributed all through the Sella region with-- in correlation with the Southeast Leadership Network. We've been distributing foods to-- packages of food to many undocumented families who are afraid to go out. Over the last two months, we've been able to do well over 2,000 deliveries of food for families in the Sella region, all from Vernon all the way to Lynnwood and everywhere in between from that. So it's been a lot of great help to be able to do that. And thank you to the Sella Kiwanis and the Southeast Leadership Network, and the many volunteers who are coming from so many organizations, from the Sella Bike Club, from the Montebello Run Club. They're donating their time and going out there and serving. So I invite all residents and all members here to go on the Sella Kiwanis Instagram page and get the information for the next volunteer event. It's a great family. Kids are welcome, and it's a lot of fun to be able to put these packages together, knowing that they're going to actually impact members in our community. So great, great way to do it. And regarding the visit that I made to Circle Park families there-- it's Kaufman, right? Kauf-- Carmont. One of the K's. Carmont. And so it was great to visit the seven families that are up against the park there. I believe they were all present. They were all there. So a lot of good information we were able to obtain, a lot of understanding there. And yes, I want to just continue to echo that. And I think I said it there quite oftenly, is that, you know, we are always striving to be better in communication. We could have been better, and I'm hopeful that this will be a way for us to learn how we can do better moving forward, and I think that that's an opportunity. Now, there was some very specific concerns that were brought up at that meeting that I have emailed staff. And I would only ask if, you know-- we won't go through the details of that today, but if you can please reach out to the residents in the area and kind of detail some of those regarding the water runoff, regarding, you know, the slope of the grade there, also the elevation of the land there, and what can be done for that. If we can please reach out to them. I know that staff is working on solutions and working on-- some have already been thought of. If we can just communicate that to the residents there, I would appreciate that. And again, you know, just whenever we have residents reach out to us, it's really an opportunity. You know, I always see every angry resident or every upset resident as an opportunity for us just to have a conversation, right? And it really-- I really benefited from that day, being there, listening. My kids went out with me. My wife was there with me, and it was a good two-hour conversation that we had. My kids ended up going to the car a little, like, about an hour and a half in to wait for me because they were trying to tell me dinner was getting cold. And by the way, I am sending you guys the bill for that dinner, as I said. But, you know, it was a great conversation. So thank you again for the invitation. Thank you for hosting me. And please tell the residents that it was a pleasure to meet every single one of them, some that have been there since 1962. And I can't wait to see her garden. She was really telling me how great it was. So one day, I'll swing by and see that. But thank you again for that visit. You know, when it comes to, you know, things that are happening in everyday life with, you know, these raids that are happening, and now that the Supreme Court just, you know, removed the temporary restraining order and made this protection that our residents were feeling kind of just go away in a blink of an eye, we have to really be prepared for that. And I urge all you-- all the families out there to have a preparation, a plan in place where you are-- you have your documents in hand, you have contact information with you, you have important phone numbers, important, you know, people to be able to reach. If you are in the process already with an attorney, having that attorney number available to you and being able to have that on hand. God, I hate having to say this out loud, right? It sounds so horrible to say that out loud of what we have to be prepared for just because of how we look today. And it's sad. So I just-- I just know that our residents are hurting right now in what I spoke to today. And I'm hopeful that, you know, we'll continue the good work and we'll continue to keep doing good things. You know, our residents are looking at us, and they're seeing us, and they're asking us, you know, to be examples of what to do and how to react with this, right? But they're also asking us to be the best versions of us. And, you know, when we're here and when we're up here, you know, we have some very serious concerns, and our city manager touched on a little bit of it, that our residents are going to look at us and ask us, "Are you the ones that are going to lead us out of this?" And I'm urging our staff and our council here to remember the why, the why that we joined this, because we need to figure out a way to work as a unit, not for the betterment of one of our political campaigns, but for the betterment of the community that's assigned us here. Too often, in these last few weeks, it's been very apparent that that hasn't been the case. And I'm asking that we continue to move our community forward and take personal pride in the work that we're doing here and understand that when we reach out to each other to have those conversations, that they should be made available, that conversations should be had between us. If we're unable to talk to each other, how can our residents really feel that they're getting the full representation that they deserve? So I just urge us to be better people. I urge us to be better leaders, and I, for one, know that I can be better. So thank you.
Okay, thank you, Vice Mayor. Just very briefly, I attended the-- again, the Chamber of Commerce and the Veterans Resource-- I mean, Resource Center-- Resource Fair. And I was really impressed for the amount of people who attended and also the amount of resources that are out there for veterans. It's just amazing, the amount of agencies that are out there where they can actually get information and get, you know, help. I think that was really impressive. I also attended the-- I went to a retreat with the Gateway City Cog. It was a day retreat, and we just went through everything that we have done throughout the year. And the number one, it was transportation and the Southeast Gateway Line and also the broadband and homelessness, which is-- are the three main topics that we talked about. Also, Councilman Rios mentioned the School Safety Collaborative meeting. We've been hosting this meeting for-- since 2005, I believe, since 2005, that we've been-- we've been-- and I mean "we" because I've been part of the School Safety Collaborative since we started. And we meet with the principals once a month. We start in September and we end in May. So throughout the year, we meet with them monthly so we can get to work with them and also any concerns that they have, or any issue that we as a city can provide them resources with. And what else? What else? I think that's it. I think that's it. I really don't have that much. But thank you, and I just want to thank everyone who is here today. Thank you for being here, and always looking forward to seeing you guys who come more often. Okay? So with that, we-- I don't know what time it is. Maybe we want to take a five-minute break? No? No? Okay. Then we'll move on to consent calendar. I want to give you a break.
Agenda items 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, and 8 are consent calendar items, Madam Mayor.
Okay. All right. So 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, and 8, I'm going to be pulling out item number 8. So we're going to be talking about that separately. And right now, we are going to do 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, and 7. And does anyone would like to speak on item numbers 2 to 7? Please come up.
Good evening, council. Nelson Moseo, 10135 Dorothy. I'd like to speak on a couple items. Number four, the Axon Body Crime Renewal. Chief, just wondering why we're doing a five-year instead of a year-to-year? From my understanding, this technology is ever-evolving. There's more competitors coming onto the market. So it might not be feasible to commit us to five years if two years from now, a better vendor with cheaper-- or cost-efficient product comes up. So just wondering why we're sticking to five years. And then number seven, regarding the City Connects brochure, Mr. Costley. Constantly doing more with less, and I applaud your department there, particularly with the pool issues. As I spoke last time, I received my water bill and I toss it. Same with the City Connect. I can't think of anybody that keeps that. We're spending $71,000 on a brochure that the vast majority of our citizens just throw away. Let's PDF it. Let's put it on the website. Let's print a small amount, put it at the library, put it at City Hall, put it at the park. Save ourselves some of this money, because I'm sure most everyone here would be glad to have it on a PDF, look at it on a screen instead of saving-- spending that money on the physical paper. Not to mention, we're also saving trees on all that paper we're spending on the brochure. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, I'll close it.
We have a lot of questions about other stuff. It should be three per item. All right. So I'll be quick. I only have three minutes.
You've got three minutes.
Regarding item number seven, I want to express my concern over appointing Robert Montalvo for the Parks and Rec Commission.
We're not-- that's number eight, and we're going to talk that separate.
Oh, I thought it was eight, seven. No.
Oh, okay. That's going to be separate. Anyone else? Okay, then I'm going to close the audience. Do we have any emails?
No emails for those.
No emails? Okay. So what's the wish of council? Any comments from council?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
And I think he brought up a really good idea, that maybe we can start exploring. Steve? Maybe we can start exploring in regards to--
Item seven.
Item number seven. I would agree. Yes, we need to print, but do we really need to send it to all of the households? Because not all of the households participate at events that are going on at the park. So maybe we can pull this item and--
Actually, Madam Mayor, I can answer that. Sorry.
Go ahead.
Coughing a little. We have discovered that throughout our year-- Uh, we have discovered that throughout our years here in the city of Southgate, that the Connect brochure, especially the Parks and Recreation portion of it, is a primary piece of what I call coffee table uh, keeper for the city of Southgate and the residents there. A lot of times as you go through process and you get it like an electronic file on a PDF that you would email or get from something else, that gets scrolled through in seconds and disappears and the residents no longer see it. We have a lot of residents who have told us that we want the paper. We want to keep it on our coffee table. We want to know when registration is. Because a lot of times this gets sent out two, three weeks ahead of time and you're all like, yeah, I'm going to sign my kid up for soccer and baseball and this and that and we're going to do all that. And then two weeks later, you're like, where is this? How much is it? What's it going to do? And we try to get to the website. They truly appreciate the overall thing of having it there. Now, we totally recognize that there are a lot of residents who don't use it, right? It's in some form a junk mail for some, right? But the cost change isn't that significant for it, that when we do it, because we bulk mail the whole thing, that it's not significant that. I know someone else had suggested at one time, hey, is there an opt-out? The cost of opting out would be more staff time than it's worth in saving money across the board. And we don't know that, see, some residents say you live at, on Dorothy Avenue and you're, don't use it ever. That day you move, the next guy in could have five kids who all want to be there and you've opted out that address and we're not sending it anymore? And they're like, why, why don't we get it? So we have throughout the years discovered that it is a big piece for a lot of the residents in the city, not only for the information that uh, Giselle and Company put on the front of it, but the registration process and getting to know when special events are there. Because it's not all, hey, come September twelfth and sign up. It's like, hey, Halloween is this day or the special Halloween is that day. And you tend to go back to the coffee table and go, ooh, page eight, Halloween's on this day. So they've expressed that to us because we've brought this up in the past and they have expressed this to us many times, that that is what they would like to keep. If it's one of those, we decide, hey, it could save money. I think in the end, you would probably lose money in registration to what you would save here.
Uh, uh, sorry, but uh, your time is up. Sorry.
Thank you, Steve.
Yeah, uh, well, I, I, I kind of agree. Is it four times a year that it goes out?
Correct.
So it's four times a year and it, it is, I like the copy table thing. I, I like the idea of something hard copy going to the homes and being, you know, and I do keep it around and, and in the household. Uh, it's good PR for us, right? And it pays for itself, right? Because of the registration. So I kind of like the idea of, because not everybody's internet and all of that. So I think that's a good thing. Um, but I had a question regarding um, the uh, which one is the water, the Integrated Regional Water Joint Project, our uh, Joint Authority. Just to quit, who sits on it and what, what, you know, I, I know it's not a lot of money, but I know it's important to be there. I just want to, what do you do? Is, is it a staff member or council member that sits on it?
Yeah, I can give just some background. Yeah, just a quick background, but you know, the city joined the Gateway Water Management Authority, that's the shorter name for that, uh, in two thousand and seven to work with the twenty-eight um, Gateway City, uh, City, twenty-eight cities in the Gateway region, through these regional partnerships and collaboration. Uh, the JPA was formed to create a um, to be able to be competitive with a new state grant program that came at the time. In essence, the state said, if you want to benefit from this grant program, you could only do so through a collaborative measure in JPA. So this JPA was one that was formed, the LA, the Greater LA JPA was formed as well. So there are several. So together what we do is we address uh, regional storm water quality issues. We apply for grant funding and we attempt to resolve those. So we do things that at that level, no individual city can do or it's too expensive. Like if we wanted to test water quality in the LA River at big regional stations, that's all of us coming together from Long Beach to uh, they, you know, the, the, the north side of the Gateway region to invest and fund and, and, and partner. Uh, now, the uh, the, for Southgate is really important because our, our price tag for stormwater quality compliance uh, from the state is over sixty million dollars. So this really helps us. So in terms of who sits in that, that is a board, but it's a board of technical representatives from each city. That's part of the, the governance rules is to participate, you have to be a technical uh, representative, you have to be an expert in that. And so at the end of the day, uh, you've, the council appoints the uh, representatives for Southgate and traditionally it's been me and, and alternative. And so it's the technical experts, it's not elected officials. The only elected official that ever went to that was Mr. Bill Dewitt, because he had a lot of uh, uh, background. But it, it is a, a fifteen thousand dollar cost to the city. It's a very small investment for a huge financial um, turnaround in, in projects and have you.
Anyone else?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And Steve, uh, thank you for providing that information regarding the uh, brochure because that was uh, one of the questions that we, we were discussing uh, during the week was, is there a better option? Is there a way for residents to opt out? You, you may be adding, you know, that question in one of the bills or something that you can opt out of certain things, right? And yeah, you, you start to understand and I think a lot of us here understand because we probably have all done some kind of mailers during the campaign time where a certain amount of uh, mailouts is at one price and if you do a bulk uh, uh, you know, mailers, the price goes down quite a bit. So it really doesn't become that much of a cost savings. And uh, I, you know, as part of uh, the Southgate JAA, um, I see family members actually walking in with the brochure in hand saying, hey, I heard that the signups started today. It's uh, eighty dollars, where do I go to sign up? And then they're actually having it and we're, we're filling in uh, out the application there. Uh, and also they come into our office asking, hey, where do I sign up for the tiny twos or, or anything like that? Because they see our office open and they have that brochure in hand. So it is something that I see that most people uh, do bring around when they're doing registration. But I, I do like the fact that we are um, always posting our digital copy on our website. We're also um, listing it on our Instagram uh, and, and social media as well when it becomes available. So it, it is uh, an optional choice for us and uh, this cost savings isn't uh, sufficient enough to warrant it to be uh, discontinued. So I thank you for that, for the information and the email during the week.
If I may, uh, I mean, there's also the option of, of instead of uh, four times a year, three times a year, just include four months.
Four seasons.
Well, four seasons, right. But again, we're, what we're looking at is the information that's on there is um, covering all the park programs, all the activities and just, just a thought.
If I can for that, one of the topics of the day has been communication. This is one of our pieces of communication to the residents of the city of Southgate, not only from the Parks and Recreation Department, but from our admin and other things as they go out. So kind of a little off on both, are we going to communicate? Part of the question would come back to that. And please note, while I understand totally the PDF version of life, we don't have twenty-five thousand email addresses to send it to, which this means when we mail it, everyone gets one, right? If it's just, hey, I'll put my name in, sure, we'd email it out to two thousand people, but we'd be missing a large part of our community who would never see what we offer or the important communications for the business or other things that would go out.
And I should just add that, a lot of people still think I work for the post office and so when these booklets go out, they ask me, hey, I didn't get my booklet. And I was, well, let me let the letter carrier know, but I don't work there anymore. Uh, but there is a lot of people out there that do depend on this. But again, I was just throwing the other idea out, maybe instead of four years, three years.
Now, and a lot of, a lot of our residents, I mean, again, I mean, I notice technology, it's right now, it's a priority, but not a lot of our residents are into their computers. Most of them are their kids, but not the elderly, not the uh, I mean, the young folks, I mean, probably, but um, I know that there is a lot of seniors that depend on the brochure. Okay, so with that, can I get a motion to...
Madam Mayor, I still have a question for the chief on item number four. Just because you posed a question. Now, I know the contract is for five years with Axon Enterprise. Are they going to be providing updates for us on a yearly basis or as soon as it becomes available?
Yeah, so um, just kind of give you the thirty thousand foot level of Axon. Prior to implementation of this, it was about a two-year project. And what we did is we took three of the most used body camera systems and platforms that were um, available to law enforcement in LA County. Axon was by far the, the most expensive. Reason why we went to Axon is because during the testing phase, there was connectivity issues with the other two platforms, meaning um, when we would enter the station, the downloading wouldn't occur, wouldn't occur. Um, Axon is a, is, is a very robust system that allows interface with the cloud services. So it's not just the body cameras. And yes, to answer your question, updates are, are included. So when body cameras uh, break or they're, they don't work, they're replaced with no extra charge. If there's updated cameras, that's included as well. This system is, is very unique because it's tied to our tasers. So we have Bluetooth connectivity in the tasers. As soon as the tasers come out of your holster, the body camera activates. There's less action that you, a police officer has to take, which includes turning on your lights and sirens, your body camera goes on. So it's a, it's a very robust, very involved piece of technology. We do have a, a ninety-day clause if we wanted to get out, uh, but I don't see us going that way unless you have a, a, a platform that's going to be rivaling Axon. They are the leaders in this across the United States and actually across the, the world. They put a lot of money in research and design and um, it hasn't failed us. We actually have evidence.com, which is a preferred, uh, Axon is a preferred device when we link the district attorney's office with evidence. We go out into the field, um, and we tell, uh, talk to a resident about certain crimes that occurred. They connect, we can give them a link and they can upload Ring cameras or any videos that they have into this platform. So it's very robust, it's very um, um, complex and it's a great product for us. By the way, this is funded by Asset Fortress, not general fund money. Um, when JAG grant funds come along every year, we offset it with forty, fifty thousand dollars of that JAG grant fund. So um, it's a proven um, piece of equipment. It's actually helped us in mitigating complaints. Um, it's actually helped us solve some very important cases out in the field and it's disproved a lot of allegations, which I think is important. We call, in the, in the name of transparency, it's a good product. But the short answer is if we want it out, we can, just got to give ninety days. I just don't see us doing that unless we do away with the system entirely.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, so with...
Want to add a follow-up question? Do we have uh, is this just a, officers wear these cameras or is it, do we also have connected to the car? Is there a camera in the car?
Yeah, so, so there, we don't have camera, dash cam videos, but um, they're connected to the, when you turn your lights and sirens on, like when you go driving code three. And I, I do want to add that it's not just police officers, we actually extended it to the jailers because things happen in the jail, uh, the community service officers, the parking enforcement officers. So all field personnel that are out there, it's not just police officers, they have cameras and it's done the department really well.
Thank you. Okay, so with that, can I get a motion? So moved.
Second.
Okay, roll call please.
Councilmember Avalos?
Yes.
Councilmember Hurtado?
Yes.
Councilmember Rios?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Barone?
Yes.
Mayor Davila?
Yes. Okay, so with that, we'll go on to item number eight.
Can you read item number eight, please? The city council will consider a ratifying the appointment by councilmember Maria del Pilar Avalos of Robert Montalvo to the Parks and Recreation Commission. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. At this time, um, council, you want to have any comments or after?
No, I think I already made my comments, Madam Mayor, but thank you.
Okay, uh, at this time I'm going to open it to the audience. Anyone in the audience would like to speak on item number eight, please come forward.
Good evening, council and community. My name is Mara Castañeda. I live over at Taft Avenue. Um, it is deeply concerning to me that Maria Pilar Avalos um, wants to appoint uh, a specific individual, Robert Montalvo, to the Parks and Recreation Commission. This is an individual who has verbally attacked many constituents in our community, including myself, including councilmembers here, including yourself. There's videos of that. He spreads misinformation to our community. He has expressed in the past that he hates the police department. He supports defunding the police department. There's videos of this as well. He may have deleted them, but we have screen recording. It exists. He has called our officers pigs. He has attempted to bully our councilmembers repeatedly by posting uh, photos, adding pig faces, you name it, he's been a part of that, including you, Maria Pilar Avalos. So for you to pretend like it didn't happen or you're not a part of that, yes, you have. He's also attacked and I witnessed our volunteers at the snack shop a couple of years ago as well, verbally and bullied them. And I was there present and I also spoke to him about it. I attempted, he ignored me, he didn't want to talk about it. So um, you know, earlier, I'm going to quote you, you said, pick something better. I'm going to ask you to pick someone better. Thank you.
Next. No, no clapping, please.
So I want to express my concern of...
Your name for the record, please?
Liz Ruiz Kaufman. I want to express my concern over appointing Robert Montalvo for the Parks and Rec Commission. As the Parks and Rec Commission Vice Chair, our commission's focus is to advise council on matters related to our parks. My own focus as a lifelong volunteer for this community is to make sure our park staff and partner organizations have the support they need to continue the growth and success in park events and activities they have every year. Appointing someone that has had a historical focus attacking one particular partner organization, which is the JAA, over political issues is a disgrace. Most of you were present throughout the years Mr. Montalvo openly harassed me during the Zoom era of our meetings, when he childishly called me names, uploaded wannabe memes about me, minimized my degree and experience while simultaneously blocking me online so that I couldn't respond to anything. All this because I politely corrected the Southgate water quality misinformation he, Maria Estrada, and Thomas Buckley carelessly disseminated online, creating panic amongst our residents, making them more susceptible to getting scammed with unneeded water filtration systems, or making them think they had to buy bottled water when the water we have is perfectly fine for use and consumption, more so in fact than bottled water is. And what besides having a moral compass made me speak out about this, my experience as an environmental justice activist since I was a kid in nineteen ninety-eight and my hard-earned environmental science and geology degrees from Cal State Long Beach, and not to mention the work experience I've had as an environmental scientist working in government and consulting since two thousand and eight. Ms. Avalos, since you are a rep at the Southeast Water Coalition, you should be more concerned about his actions misinforming our community over water quality. Water quality data should not be up for debate. Numbers are numbers and facts are facts. Creating mass panic over brown water from flushing and sharing events all for political attention is opportunistic and sets us back in the environmental justice movement when we have so many real issues to address. I'm not alone as a target for this harassment and lies. You all up there are in the same boat as me. Even you, councilmember Avalos, he made an entire episode calling you corrupt and you still went ahead to nominate him. Either way, appointing him to get a target off your back will not score any public sympathy. Before I go, I want to share with you one of my biggest accomplishments, which is my science degree. And I wish he was here so he could see it, because he blocked me, so he couldn't see it. But because not enough low-income queer women of color from around here have one of these, this has, this along with my hard work and integrity helping my community is what has gotten me where I am. And more recently, as a board member for the State Board of Environmental Safety, where I served, I recently served a two-year term. So Montalvo, whenever you call me not a scientist, I feel nothing but pity for how disingenuous and ignorant you are. And you know what? Even when you call me Dr. Dolittle, I smiled inside because it's confusing and I wonder if it has to do with the volunteer work I've done on weekends since twenty seventeen, trapping, neutering, returning, and sometimes finding homes for hundreds of stray cats in our community. Because that, if that's where it stems, stems from, then I'm nothing but proud of all I've done for our community. Oh, this is my medal for my... Oh, this is my medal from the fire department, too. Thank you.
Good evening, Candace Solachi. It's hard to cram in eight years of abuse, attacks into three minutes, so bear with me. After I heard your speech on your soapbox, I had to do some changes. So dear city council members, I'm here today because I'm furious and appalled. The mere idea that Robert Montalvo could be appointed to the Southgate Parks and Recreation Committee is outrageous. After everything we have seen, after the lies, slander, and attacks on the Southgate JAA, its members, and Mr. Hurtado, how could anyone, especially Ms. Avalos, even consider putting this man in a position of power? Mr. Montalvo is a liar. He's a bully. He's a body shamer. He spreads misinformation and attacks community members with malicious glee that is hard to put into words. He has smeared Mr. Hurtado, attacked volunteers, and targeted innocent people, including myself, all while hiding behind social media platforms to amplify his hate. And now, after all of that, you want him representing the city? Ms. Avalos, your actions are telling. You claim that you care about the community, but let's be honest, this is politics as usual. This is a play right out of the Denise Diaz handbook. Let me not get my hands dirty. Let me appoint RJ to do my dirty work. That's how she did it, and that's what you're doing. And now, this is not leadership, this is cowardice disguised as governance. This man has abused his previous authority as a park commissioner, bullied vendors, and disrupted programs that actually benefit our residents. He has humiliated people, lied publicly, and attacked our police department with venomous unprovoked statements. He's toxic. And yet, here we are, even considering him for a position that requires integrity, judgment, and respect for the community, all of which he has none. Do you want someone who posts videos calling our officers assholes and claiming that they're killing our children? Someone who spreads lies and hatred about volunteers, program leaders, and families? Is this what you consider fit representation for Southgate? Because I don't. This appointment is a betrayal of every resident, volunteer, and child who relies on our city programs. It is a replay of past attacks by Denise Diaz and RJ Montalvo, a rerun of cruelty, lies, and manipulation. Southgate deserves leaders, not liars. It deserves respect, not slander. It deserves integrity, not political theater. I urge the council to reject this appointment immediately. Do not let personal vendettas, election psychopolitics, or fear dictate who represents our city. Southgate deserves better. We will not be silenced, we will not be misled, and we will not accept this. Pilar, you say that you listen to the people. Well, listen to us. We don't want him. We don't need him. He shouldn't represent this city or its residents. This man has literally gone to people's homes, and it's all on video, just as Ms. Mendez mentioned, when he was participating with the street vendors and all of that, going to Mr. Hurtado's house, Ms. Davila's house. This is what you want? You should be ashamed of yourself.
Okay, then I'm closing the audience. Do we have any emails?
Yes, Madam Mayor, we have three. First one is from Mr. Mario Dominguez, who strongly urges the council to reject the item, imposing the appointment of Robert Montalvo to any city commission. He criticized Montalvo's past behavior as disruptive, harmful, claiming he lacks the character, ideas, or integrity needed to serve the community. Dominguez emphasized that the residents deserve to stay in such appointments and called the council to choose individuals who reflect dedication and respect, not division and controversy. The second one is from Sandra Apollino, who expressed strong opposition to Robert Montalvo being appointed as park commissioner, stating he abused the position in the past and has not changed. She referenced a prior incident involving the JAA snack shack and urged that he permanently be barred from serving at all. The last public comment is from Angie Torres, who expressed strong disappointment in Councilwoman Avalos for attempting to appoint RJ Montalvo to the Parks and Recreation Commission. She stated that Mr. Montalvo has a history of spreading misinformation and making baseless accusations against other council members. Ms. Torres questioned the motives behind this appointment, citing past derogatory remarks Mr. Montalvo made about Councilwoman Pilar Avalos and alleged misconduct involving local community groups. She concluded by urging Councilwoman Avalos to withdraw the nomination and stated that her family withdrew their support to her because of this decision. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, back to council.
Okay, Madam Mayor. Okay, so, look, I said this comment before, right, that quoting Voltaire, philosopher of the 17th and 18th century, that, you know, people have freedom of speech, and I will support that. You have a right to your comments, and I will fight to the end to allow you to say those things. Everyone is entitled to an opinion, but you're not entitled to your own facts. And that's one of the big problems. I could bring in a whole bunch. I have paper after paper of times that he's attacked me on social media. Do me a favor, can you hand out the, give me the things I gave you? This is just a small sampling. This is, you have the other page, too, the one with signatures? Okay, so, okay, get those out. I wish you would have had the other ones, but let me see, I think I might have it. No, I think not. In any case, there was, I was part of the LAUSD redistricting committee. And at the end, we had two maps. One map disenfranchises the southeast area. That's the map that was passed. And Robert Montalvo made a podcast, made a podcast in which he said that I supported that map. I forwarded all the audios and videos of those meetings to the city clerks of anybody wants to see for themselves, because there's Robert's story, there's my story, and you'll find that my story coincides with the facts. During that meeting, during those meetings, it was a year long to redistrict LAUSD. I opposed the map. Okay? You can listen to the audios, you can watch the audios, and you'll find that I opposed that map. Yet, he says that I supported that map to disenfranchise our community. So once you see those audios, once you see, you listen to the audios and you watch the videos, you'll know that he's either lying on purpose, or he just doesn't understand. Now, the other section, and I, I'll send it to you in case you didn't get it. This letter was sent by leaders of southeast LA objecting to this map, and there's signatures by local officials from the southeast area. I'm one of the signatures on it, because I opposed it. So the question becomes, why would he make a podcast that is demonstrably inaccurate? But he hopes that you don't look at it, he hopes that you don't find the truth. He made a podcast where he couldn't splice certain things. And I'll tell you when that was. That was in 2020, when we nominated Maria Davila to be the mayor. If you listen to the actual audio of that meeting, it doesn't resemble what he posted on social media, what he did on his podcast. What he did on his podcast is he says, "There's corruption in Southgate." Well, instead of me explaining it to you, let me play what you will hear in the audio. And you hear a lady in the audience say, "Councilmember Hurtado, is there something you want to say?" And then you hear my voice say, "Oh, yeah, I nominate Maria Davila to be mayor." And then you hear the city clerk say, "Congratulations, Maria." That never took place. We had a lengthy council meeting that night. That never took place. So to deceive people, he did a lot of cutting and splicing. And then he hopes you don't actually listen to the meeting. That's nonsense. Now, I believe everybody does deserve a second chance. He was appointed in either 17 or 18 by Denise Diaz, and during his time, all he did was harass the JAA board members, to the point where he thinks that because he wears a polo shirt that says Parks and Rec Commissioner, he can go out there and bully the JAA staff. Well, there was an incident report that took place, and if you read the incident report, and I'll tell you, you can get it yourself, because it's in the record. It's dated, July 22nd. It's on an incident that took place on July 20th. He went in to the snack bar and said, "I'm here to do an inspection," and he harassed our staff. But if you read the report, have you, yes, she was, and she saw the, and she heard the harassment. He claims, if you read this report, he says that he, and this is how he follows it, that he went from an event to the softball fields, and then he went over to the snack bar, where a nice young man invited him in and gave him a tour. He was asked by the park director, Paul Adams, "Is that it?" "Yeah, that's it." "Did you take any photos?" "Yeah, a few." "Was Councilwoman Diaz with you?" He said, "Well, I ran across her along the way. We talked about something unrelated, but she wasn't with me when I questioned the JAA staff." Ah, but then, he goes on to read, he goes on to say, "That knowing that there's cameras at the park, I reviewed the cameras." And then it says, "Both Denise Diaz and RJ went from the Relay for Life event directly to the JAA staff. They can both be seen questioning the volunteers. They can both be seen going to the snack bar, and they can both be seen going back." So why the lie? Or is his recollection just not there? He's made podcasts. Mind you, I'm a married man, I have a son, I have a daughter, and I have grandchildren, who at one point, prior to all this drama created by Montalvo, could Google my name and see all the things I've gotten, I've accomplished, and I accomplished for the family and my community, over 30 years of volunteer work. But he claims that I'm out there carrying photos and distributing photos of children. And now my kids have to see that? My grandchildren have to see that because this guy has a personal issue with me? That's unacceptable. Yet, in 2020, when we had an opportunity to appoint, Denise Diaz appointed him again. And at that time, I gave him a second chance. All five of us voted for him, all five. Yet he tells people I voted against him. And now you want to bring him back? I think he had his second chance. And all his attacks, they're not history. They're not history. They're still happening. They're still happening up until a couple of days ago. I don't get onto his pages, but I get all these messages from people, "You got to sue this guy. You got to sue this guy." Well, when he, he made an accusation about me attacking his daughter, that failed because people who know me know that's not me. They know that that's nonsense. So what did he do next? He made a podcast in which he said that the JAA board members were at the American Legion, took his daughter to a hospitality room, placed her on a stool, and that they tried to feed her alcohol. What kind of person does that? I'll tell you. If I was a person and I saw somebody taking my child and putting him on a stool and tried to feed him alcohol, I would have called the cops. They would have been detained, but why didn't he do it? Because it didn't happen. I got a call from a pastor who's upset at this appointment because Montalvo put an image of the pastor with horns, lipstick. I got business owners who are upset at this. I got, I mean, I could go on and on. I gave you just a couple of examples, but let me tell you, me and my friends have stacks and stacks of paper. You know, in regards to saving paper, honestly, I don't know how many trees we killed with all the information we have on him. And now he wants to serve our community again? Good luck. I'm not going to support him. Thank you.
Anyone else? No? Okay. Are you going to say something?
Yeah, I'm here. Yeah, I'm saddened by some of the comments made today. You know, since I've been on the city council, we've always approved all appointees. It looks like this time, there's real, some real concern about making this appointment, and it's kind of unprecedented, because even in the agenda, it says, "A city council may appoint at their individual discretion a representative to serve." So we do have that, and we've always valued that, and I guess that looks, that's, it seems like today, maybe, and I'm hearing that it's not going to go through. So, you know, it kind of takes away the ability for a council member to appoint somebody at their discretion. And I know that maybe there is a lot of hurt feelings here, and I can see that, and I've been a target of that, too. But I think we all are, at one point or another, as council members, we serve the public, and there's always going to be criticisms of the decision. But what I'm concerned about is that we're breaking with tradition. If we do not vote, this would be the first time that the council decides to not go by the discretion of a council member. And then where does that lead now? You know, just concerned that people want to serve. We don't have enough people. We have some commissions that are still empty, that people, you know, and so not everybody participates. I think that what I'm concerned about is breaking tradition and setting a precedent here that, and, you know, I know that maybe it's hurtful what's been out there and maybe still out there, but that's part of being an elected official. I mean, and you mentioned, that's a good point, opinion versus facts. It seems like today's society, we have more of opinions than facts, and anybody chooses their opinion, so it's hard, even not just at this level, but at the federal level and all levels of government. So there's a lot of that going on. And so, so my concern is that, you know, that the councilwoman did make an appointment, and that we're going to break from that tradition, you know, and that's, and another fact that, where do we go from next when we decide we don't want somebody because of their views not to serve? And I'm concerned about that, that, you know, that, and I know there's already comments, staff, that we don't want-
Yeah, can I just request that this is, the period of time for the public to comment has already passed. I'd ask the public just to refrain from making their comments so that we can have a clear record of what the council is saying. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm just worried that we're going down the road, and I've heard that we're talking about censoring commissioners, too, of coming and speaking to the city council. That's the next step you're going to hear. And I'm saddened by that, because we don't have a lot of people participating, and that's the direction of this council. I'm really sad, and that that's what we're going to do. That's all.
Hold on. Vice Mayor, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Like, I'm not going to speak ill of Mr. Montalvo. He has a daughter that's going to be able to Google him all his life and figure out what he's done and what he said about all of us here. So I won't, I won't say that, anything bad about him, because I think that, you know, we need to be better than that. But what I will say is that these positions that we, that we appoint, they are important to the, to our community. They make decisions and they give direction to certain staff members in their, in their lines that are, to improve and better the lives of our community. And if we're making appointments, I hope that we're having that mindset, that we're making the best choice for our community moving forward, and not trying to give people- opportunities to correct past wrongs. We need to ensure that those positions are held by people that have the best intentions of our community at heart. And regardless of what they say about me personally, I don't believe that to be the fact in this case. And that is why I cannot support RJ Montalvo for this position.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, I just want to clear a couple of things up. Years back, and it was when we named Maria Davila to be the mayor, we had a lot of people who objected to the person who was next in line. That was Denise Diaz. There was just so much animosity that she created. And Mr. Rios voted to not allow her to be mayor. So to say that we're breaking tradition is not new to him. Just want to clear that up. Then we also had Councilwoman Avalos, who removed a commissioner because the commissioner had made a comment that was not in line with her way of thinking. And I could have and probably should have said something at that time, because we do have a right to remove commissioners. Okay? We do have a right. Ah, but there's a process. And that process was not done that time. She just removed her on her own. The process that we have is in our municipal code. The municipal code basically says this, if she's my appointee, and one of them wants to remove my appointee, they have to bring it in so we can vote on it publicly. And I vote, if I vote against the removal, all four have to remove her. But if I'm one of the votes to remove her, all that we need is three. That's in our municipal code. Yet she removed a commissioner without going through a process. So again, you know, I, I just want to clear those things up because they're painting this out like, you know, a poor guy. And I really hope he gets his act together. I really do. You know, I, I, I try my best with him. You, you don't see me posting hatred to him. The guy served in the military, and I applaud him for that. And so I have a lot more latitude, a lot more leeway because of that. But once that continued damage is going on, I, it just makes it hard. But I, I just wanted to address those things because I don't want it to make it seem like we're going through a path we've never gone before. You voted to not allow Denise Diaz to be mayor. You did that. I was one of them too, but you did that. So we do have precedent, and we have removed people in the past for conduct. Now, the last thing I want to cover is there is no such thing to censor commissioners. What, what we have to understand is the following, there are laws, and there are ethics we have to follow. So for example, if I go to a planning commission meeting, and I say, I oppose this issue, I oppose it because I don't want it, and I'm speaking against it, if I don't get my way, if that item comes before the council, I can no longer participate. I have to recuse myself. And the same thing happens with commissioners. If commissioners come in here tonight and address an item that we're discussing, and then they make a, a comment that later on, some project comes before them as a planning commissioner or park commissioner, they've already played their card. They've already said how they're going to vote on certain issues. So what we're trying to do with this discussion is, how do we control our comments and the comments of our commissioners so that they don't violate the law or the Code of Ethics? So no one's trying to censor anybody. We're, we're trying to make sure that everybody is educated on this. We take, what I'm speaking of isn't new. We take a Code of Ethics. I'm sure you've taken it because we're all required. And if you missed that chapter, let me know. I'll tell you where it's at. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Do you want to say something?
Yes, I do want to say something, Mayor. I think that's, well, that gives you an inclination that that's where we're going, that pretty soon, we're going to bring that up, that commissioners, like Lisette, you're not going to be able to speak if you're a commissioner. And I find that outrageous, that eventually commissioners are not going to be able to speak before. Those are the ones that are involved. Those are the ones that are more involved. We need civic participation. We need to get more people involved, especially with what's going on with our city right now. And if that's the road we're going to go, I think that's the wrong course. That's all I'm saying.
Okay. And I'm not going to say much because most of you already have said it. And I'm just, you know, it's, it's very hard to, to make a, not to make a decision, but to take action on item that we all should be voting for. But unfortunately, when I saw this name in the agenda and where does this take us? It takes us back when all the social media started attacking not just, not just me, not just council members, all of us. It, it has attacked a lot of our, our community members. It has attacked a lot of our, our staff. And all I'm going to say, you know what, we need to, we need to look who we appoint. One council member, I learned from him, Henry C. Gonzalez, he said, shame on you. Second time, shame on me. At this time, I'm not going to be ashamed because that already happened twice, and shame on you, whoever appointed this commis, to be a commissioner. So with that, and when it comes down to skipping, skipping, you know what, it all depends on the situation. It's not always, it's not always. It all depends on situation. We need a person who's respectful, who's going to respect our community. And unfortunately, I have absolutely, and I said it, absolutely no respect for this And I can see social media tomorrow. Yep, we're all going to be there, except you. But you know what? I want to make a motion to oppose this position.
I'll second that.
And Rock Office.
Councilmember Avalos?
No.
Councilmember Hurtado?
Yes.
Councilmember Rios?
Of state.
Vice Mayor Barone?
Yes.
Mayor Davila?
Absolutely, yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, we'll go with warrants.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Read the warrants to the agenda.
The city council will consider approving the warrant register for September 9th, 2025. The grand total is $1,853,782.93. Cancellations are none. Thank you, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Before we get started with the, the open comments, I would like a question to Lewis. If we've had any follow-up regarding expanding the PDF to be able to include the entire description?
Yes, actually, the version of the warrants that you're looking at is the revised version. In those cases where you see a description that appears to be cut off, it's actually not cut off in the system. It is a character limit within the Eden financial system.
So it's the financial system, not the printing that's causing it to be cut off?
That's correct. There's a character limitation. But we, we did reformat it to get the most out of the description that we can.
Thank you. And thank you for that clarification. Also, I would like to just clarify for any resident or any council member who has any questions regarding the warrant register. We get these usually the week before the council meetings for us to review. If there's ever a question or concern on it, you can always email me as the auditor or email the financial director for them as well. So I'll go ahead and open up to any member here in the audience if they have any comments. Please state your name.
Good evening, council, once again. Nelson Mocio, 10135 Dorothy. Just a couple, or a few items I'd like to point out from here. There's a charge here from Studio Spectrum for $9,981 for the live stream. I understand it's for this live stream that's going on. I'm wondering if that's a monthly, quarterly, yearly charge? There's a couple of association dues on here. There's the Southern California Association of Governments for $13,000. I'm wondering what that association does and how does it benefit the city for that amount? And also the Gateway Cities Association or Council of Governments, that's a $27,000 annual membership. I'm wondering what they do to benefit the city, particularly since Mr. Hughes and said, we're, we're tightening the budget, wondering if they're providing a service that's worth those amounts. Thank you.
Thank you, Nelson. Anybody else? Seeing none. Staff, would you be able to respond to the SoCal, the Spectrum for 9,000, I think?
Yes, Vice Mayor. The Studio Spectrum charge is fees associated with the service, support services related to the streaming. That includes also the procurement of hardware. When we were dealing with a couple of the streaming issues in the past, we had to invest in some equipment to help ensure that we had a recording of the, a full recording of the meeting with or without a live stream as a backup, along with some other stuff that Studio Spectrum was helping us out with.
Thank you. And then regarding the, the units that we're a part of, the SoCal Association of Government and the Gateway City Council.
Mr. Vice Mayor, can I say something real quick on that? Okay, I can speak real quick on the Gateway Cities. I served on that back from 2005 to about 2017. And I also served on the I-710 Project Committee. And through those contacts that you make, you work on regional projects, transportation kind of thing. And through my involvement in that, I was able to secure roughly $15 million that helped whiten Firestone by Atlantic. And without being part of an organization like that, and we all belong to various organizations, water, I don't remember all the list, that we all belong to, the ICFA, ICA, belongs to, we all go and represent the city, and there's resources that we tap into. So again, if you think of just the Gateway Cities, one, just that one project alone is $15 million. But anyhow.
And the Gateway Cities right now, we're with transportation, and also we've been part of the Southeast Gateway Line, which is communist. So it's just basically regional funding that we get for different projects.
Great question.
Go ahead.
Go ahead.
Okay, just backing up one second on the streaming costs, which are expensive. There was a decision by council last year when we were converting from a Zoom platform to, but still having audio as our main record. We decided to go to YouTube platform and have video as our official record. We put together an inexpensive, again, trying to be cost, little cost as possible, but it wasn't sort of a best practice model. And so we've had some dropping issues of our video and buffering and things that if people have streamed over the last, say, six months, they've had that problem. Council was concerned about that. We were concerned. So we've had to invest more to do it at a higher level. So we're confident now that even if, say, the streaming, live stream is broken at the community level externally for some short time, we'll have a flow and a permanent record that doesn't have that gap. And Lewis and his team have worked on trying to improve that. So that's in a direct response to some of the gaps we were having earlier with our streaming to make it more secure. So we're trying to find that balance of not spending hundreds of thousands of dollars on a system, but trying to find the right spot. But now pivot to these regional groups, and there's a number of them. There's League of California Cities, the SCAG group that was mentioned, the Gateway Cog. These are questions that have to be asked. These are the kind of things that were potentially on the chopping block when we had a budget process this year to determine if we're going to completely cut all things that have a great benefit, but perhaps aren't basic operations to fill our structural deficit, then we would cut all of these things and many, many more, including staff positions and closed facilities in order to fully deal with that gap. However, there is value in many of these things. And so the council made a decision that we would have a smaller cut for this year of $2 million and use other funding and reserves to keep the lights on, keep these valuable connections going for this year as we make steps to try to trim expenses, find efficiencies, see what level of gap is left. And perhaps if we, there's a decision to keep certain, like, facilities open and these partnerships alive and these memberships happening because it does help the committee, maybe a revenue measure or something might come to fill that gap. So for this year, we still are doing this, but this would be another example of a valuable tool that would be on the chopping block if we couldn't fund it. And to be specific on the Gateway Cog, Councilmember Dotto mentioned funding for transportation. This is the 26 Gateway Cities. So somebody arbitrarily made an arc of parts of LA County and made it the Gateway Cog, Gateway Group. And so all the cities in that group pay this membership fee. And then there's regular meetings. I have a Gateway, we have many different subcommittees, and one of them is transportation ones. They help coordinate our efforts with Metro when we're trying to coordinate and speak to this huge entity and talk to federal governments about getting grants to build the Gateway Line. It's, we have a very tiny voice, but we, we have 26 voices for our region. We have more power. The Gateway Cog ends up being a conduit in certain cases to take county funds in one envelope and then help distribute them out into city groups and be a coordinator for our larger area. They're actually, the Gateway Cog applied for and got $25 million just last year for a Gateway Cog city fiber connection. And that line will be dug through our city in the next few months to connect all the city halls throughout the region together with high-speed fiber at no cost to the city. So there's great benefits to this. It is expensive, but there's a reason why. There's regular meetings where the city managers of this group, we meet monthly. We're having conversations at, at a, actually at a breakfast meeting where we have official presentations, but we network and we brainstorm, and how are you solving this at your city? And how are we doing that? So the group has a good value, I would say, on the return. And then the League of California Cities is another one that also is there that's all of California cities. And they, they also work together for trying to, as a team, advocate for cities' voices at Sacramento. And it's a, it's a collection of 444 cities shaking, you know, cities' needs in front of the Assembly versus Southgate. And so there's power in numbers in some of these things. But it's a great question, and it's a great, we want to have it, but it could be something next year we have to drop.
Madam Mayor, if I may, because I also had a question in regards to the SCAG fee. We don't have a representative there. Or do we?
No, we don't have a representative because it gets elected by Gateway Cities Cog. And right now, the one that has the, because we're together with Downey, and Downey is the one who represents. Yes. No, it doesn't.
It doesn't rotate. That's the problem. So we're paying into something that we really don't have a seat on the table.
No, we do have a seat, but we rotate. We actually, the council is the one who votes for, for the person to represent. And I remember that the last time there was an election, Downey got the, it had, and they still have it.
Yeah. Yeah.
March, were here?
I don't think so. I think.
So can we ask for a discount? Because we don't have representation there. I mean, to me, it goes back to.
No, I think this is, and this is in something that I did, I had a conversation with Hector during our retreat. Because I know that there is an election, and I was talking to Elisa Lee regarding the same, the same issue. And I brought it to Hector to see if there is another election where we can rotate every year, one year them and one year us, because it's just them and Downey and Southgate, and that's it. So there is a possibility there. We just need to take it to the cog. So there is a possibility there. We just need to take it to the cog.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Go ahead and return it back to council. What are your wishes?
Second.
Version second. Go ahead, roll call.
Councilmember Avalos?
Yes.
Councilmember Hurtado?
Yes.
Councilmember Rios?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Barone?
Yes.
Mayor Davila?
Go ahead.
Motion passes.
Motion to adjourn?
We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.